Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call for the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting of February 22nd. Benson.
Benson here.
Benson is present. Brunick.
Brunick here.
Brunick is present. Sarda.
Sarda here.
Sarda is present. Mybaum. Commissioner Mybaum, is your mic on?
Doesn't... Commissioner Mybaum, can you hear us?
Al, we see Commissioner Mybaum, but I think he's not hearing us.
I'll note him as present for now. Minor. Minor is still absent. Moser.
Moser here.
Moser is present. Schramm.
Schramm here.
Schramm is present. Weber.
Weber is present.
Weber is present. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson present.
Mayor Johnson is present. City Manager Leon.
Leon is present. I need to send Commissioner Minor a link, and then I'll text Commissioner Mybaum.
Good oaks. City Manager Leon is present. City Attorney Denherter.
Denherter is here.
Attorney Denherter present.
Mybaum is present.
Thank you, Mybaum.
All right. You have before you the minutes from the regular meeting of February 8th. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves to minutes.
Sarda second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion about the minutes? Al, roll call, please. Al, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't have my mic on.
Oh, good.
We'll begin with Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Schramm.
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson.
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick.
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda.
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor, is she on yet?
I just got her the link, so she probably is not quite on yet.
Okay, and Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Minutes pass eight to zero.
City Manager's report.
Okay, I'm really... I'm hopping here today. A few things here this evening I want to visit with you about. First of all, I want to... If you hadn't seen the paper, or you hadn't read my update, you might not know, but Chief John Harris has announced his, what, third or fourth retirement? Fifth retirement! So he'll be retiring for the fifth time. This time, he says, for sure. We'll see. I think he probably is going to retire from work-life, but not living fully. So he was gracious to give a lot of notice, because as you know, finding the right person for that position is time-consuming and a very important decision. So that's a hire that I will be taking the lead on, because it is one of my direct reports. But I will be having more of a public hiring process than I would for probably one of the other department heads, because our police chief is a very public figure amongst the department heads. So I'll be asking for some Commission help on that, and I'll also be asking for some community help on that. I don't have a timeline yet. Kalina and I were going to work on that together last week, and then we had to have an energy crisis. So if we have a week where we're not in full-blown crisis mode, we're going to get working on that timeline and start moving ahead. But we are advertising. I am advertising within the department, and I'm also advertising regionally as well. So we'll see what candidates come forward, and we'll look forward to finding our next leader, and we'll certainly... By that time, we'll be able at least to get together and have a picnic or something, and send John off properly. So not a time for goodbye yet, but just an information point. A little closer up on the calendar, April 13th, we have a City Commission election, and we're having petitions being brought into our Finance Office. If you are a petitioner, and you have not handed your petition in, you've got to hurry. Friday, 5:00 p.m. Everything has to be signed, sealed, delivered, and accounted for. So get those in. Petitions are still available, and you can also print them from the web... State Secretary of State website. I'm not... Just checking. That was Commissioner Minor. I wasn't just texting anyone else. So reminder for that. Couple of other things. We have a agenda item, as you know, later on, in old business, which is our mask ordinance that you'll be considering. Prior to a motion being made, the mayor's going to hand it off to me. I'll have given you some recommendations from the Health Board, but we'll have a couple other points of information there. I don't... Well, I expected a big crowd. I don't see a big crowd. Maybe the weather... That's because of the weather? Maybe the crowd is coming. But I did want to set forth some protocol for folks if we do have a big crowd. It doesn't look unruly here in the audience, but maybe a little bit. I don't know about these guys back here. But we're going to ask, of course, that people wear a mask that covers their nose and mouth per Yankton School District policy. We'll ask that folks approach the podium who want to speak in favor or against the ordinance from the west side, and then exit through the east side. We're going to have you sign up. So we have Officer Brooke Jackson, and Officer Dylan Wilson, and the chief. They have a sign-up sheet. We're going to limit folks to three minutes. I'm going to give the mayor a wave when there's 30 seconds remaining, and then I'll let him know when the three minutes are up. We ask that people do not repeat themselves. We also ask for no cheering or booing, because that can interfere with the audio. We want to make sure people in YouTube land are hearing what's being said and understanding what's being said. We also will read YouTube comments. Mr. Mingo, are you out there somewhere in YouTube land?
Got it covered.
Okay, so Mr. Mingo will read YouTube comments. We have forwarded all the comments that we received to you. We received them before the packet was put together. They are part of the public record. We also received some emails as latest today that we forwarded to you as well. So we tried to make sure we communicated with those folks that sent us emails and got it back to them that you would see all those. So if you haven't today checked your folder in OneDrive, you may want to do that, because there wasn't a couple others that came in a little bit later. Also, another thing that's important is that we run a meeting that if our kids watch it, they'll be proud of how we behaved. So just respecting everyone else, as we know sometimes people's passions can get passionate. So thank you very much. We have another item. It's the Pathways CDGB item, that we need to take a log of who is in attendance. So if you see someone jotting down names, or if there were someone in the audience we didn't recognize, we may approach and get their name. That's just required for the grant application. So that's what we're doing there. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that the bid time is now to win the first-time experiences at the Huether Family Aquatic Center. If you want to be the first one down the slide, around the lazy river, off the high dive, doing all kinds of things, put in your bids. Also, if you want to participate in the competition between Officer Preston Chrissy and Dr. Dave Withrow, to see who will do one of the dives off the high dive, hop online. There's information on our Facebook site. There's information on the Parks and Rec Facebook site. We want to make sure that we can bolster that GUP money that's being raised for the GUPPY grant, for folks to have access to the Huether Family Aquatic Center. And that's where those funds go. Also, too, a portion of that funding will go to the center for active generation folks that want to have access to the Huether Family Aquatic Center. So I will say that Preston is a bit behind Dr. Withrow. So, you know, we need to support him here and drum up some business, because I hear he does kind of a wicked cannonball. So I'd like to see that. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will let you get to your business unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for the City Manager before we proceed? All right. Hearing nothing. We'll move on to public appearances. This is a time when members of the audience can address the Commission about an item not on tonight's agenda. If you have something, we'd ask that you step to the podium and introduce yourself. Seeing no movement in the audience, Mr. Mingo, is there anyone on YouTube who has an issue for us?
There are no comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Then we will move on to the Consent Item Agenda. Number one is Consideration of Memorandum 21-27, recommending approval of the application from Yankton County 4-H for a special events dance license for August 6th. What is your pleasure?
Benson, so moved.
Brunick, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube?
Still no comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on Consent Item 2-1. Moser.
Moser, aye.
Moser's aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Consent Item 2-1 passes nine-zero.
Number two under the Consent Item Agenda is establishing March 8th, 2021, as the date for the public hearing on the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for April 24th from the Elks Lodge. This would be for an event at the National Field Archery Association. What is your pleasure?
Sarda moves to approve.
Benson, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube?
No comments on YouTube.
Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on Consent Item 2-2. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Consent Item 2-2 passes nine-zero.
All right. We are moving on to old business. Number one is Consideration of Memorandum 21-25 regarding the request for a special malt beverage on-sale retailer's license for August 20th through 21st from the Yankton Rodeo Association, and this would be for their rodeo grounds at 404 Paddle Wheel Drive. What is your pleasure?
Benson, oh, you're fine. Benson, so moved. Moser, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube?
There are no comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call.
And this is roll call on Old Business Item 3-1. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old Business Item 3-1 passes nine-zero.
Number two under old business is Consideration of Memorandum 21-26 regarding the request for a special events on-sale liquor license for February 27th from Fussworks LLC, doing businesses, Landing, and Big River Burrito Company, and this would be for an event at 100 Douglas Avenue. What is your pleasure?
Brunick, so moved.
Schramm, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the Commission? Dave, anyone on YouTube?
There are no comments on YouTube.
Al, roll call.
This is roll call on, excuse me, Old Business Item 3-2. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old Business Item 3-2 passes nine-zero.
Number three is a Health Board update, so I will turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and members of the Commission. This will be a setup here for your next agenda item, so I don't expect any action to be taken with the Health Board update until you get to your next item, if you should so choose. But the Health Board did meet today, and we met last week, so I wanted to give a little update, rewind a little bit. We had intended to meet last Tuesday, knowing that Monday had been a holiday for us, but then we didn't know if we were going to have power or not, so we met later on in the week. But that afforded us a little bit of time. I did... We did do... The Health Board did do what I think we were asked to do at our last City Commission meeting, and that was identify some metrics, and got some good opinions, medical opinions, on these metrics. We wanted to develop some metrics that were clear and easy to understand and follow, that were as locally based as possible. That's what we understood the direction to be, and we didn't want to have too many of those to make it too complicated. So the staff and I went... Had a number of discussions about this, and we developed the following criteria. So here's what I will present to you. So our recommendation for the criteria was that we achieve either a certain vaccination rate, so that's what I call the Chirio metric. So the goal would be that either 50% of the population be vaccinated, or the vaccination is available to general population, which is that group two, and we're a ways from that right now. So you see, our Chirio is pretty gray right now. As of today, I think it says 83% there, not vaccinated, 6% with one dose, and 11% who have had both doses. So either that metric would need to be met, or both of the next two. So the next two is, on the top graph there, is the active cases in Yankton County being below 25 for three consecutive weeks, and we're not there yet, although we're getting close to that 25. So that's a positive to mention. And then the third goal, which we have met, is hospitalizations at Avera Sacred Heart Hospital, three or less for three consecutive weeks. And even though this morning we learned that we're a little worse off than we were over the past three weeks on hospitalizations, we are still having that goal met. So we talked a lot about those metrics. They're not perfect metrics. We knew that before we farmed them out to medical professionals. Just one example, not everybody in the hospital at Avera Sacred Heart is from Yankton County. So is that a good metric? It is if it supports your opinion on this matter. It's not if it does not. So we know it's imperfect. But we also know that some people that are from Yankton County, they might have an issue or concern, or reason that they might get farmed out to a different hospital in the Avera system. So maybe it would weigh out, maybe it wouldn't. Active cases, you know, if 36 of those active cases are very young people, maybe it's a lot better of a statistic than 36 folks that are elderly people. So we can debate the metrics a lot, and we did, but we knew we had a short amount of time, so we wanted to get them to our medical professionals. So we did that. I asked Mr. Ekran and Mr. Chuck Amen if he would have some physicians, as well as nurses and other health professionals, take a look at these metrics. And I was comforted to know that there was no consensus reached by those that looked at them. You know, I think that as science and data-driven folks, they understood these probably weren't perfect. The response that I got from some was, yep, this is something you could use and go by, and from others, nope, this is probably not what you should use or go by. We also got some response that there should be no discussion about this. We should continue with the mask criteria until we know more. So the response then was sort of all over the board there from our local officials. We came to the conclusion that you all would have to decide if these were good criteria or not, or if you would want us to go back to the drawing board. But we still knew that we needed to give you... We needed to give you our recommendation. So we thought another thing to do is to reach out to local communities and see what they're doing, and we did do that. There are a number of communities in South Dakota that either had ordinances, or had resolutions, or recommendations on masking. And just like the metrics, and just like we found here in Yankton, what's become of those is different. So for example, our friends in Mitchell had an ordinance that expired on, I believe, the 27th of January. There's discussion right now occurring, I believe even this week, occurring in Sioux Falls, as to what they're going to do with their masking ordinance, which was a bit like ours in that it was an ordinance but didn't have the leverage of much enforcement. There are some cities that had a recommendation. Vermillion's one of those, that extended theirs a couple of weeks, and they're going to revisit. So there's no hard-fast rule on that either. So going into that, we thought we better weigh all those things and talk as a Health Board about what our recommendation is. And we thought that whether or not you want to use these criteria, these are criteria that we'll continue to track as a Health Board and as a staff, to give us a good indication as to where we are on vaccination. I think most of us on the Health Board felt that we'd like that, I said today, that Chirio to look more like Fruit Loop, and we'll be more comfortable when it does, and we'll still use that as sort of a gauge as to how we're doing. That said, we also had a long discussion about how decisions are made and what's happening practically in the community. And as many of you have observed, while we have a mask ordinance now, people have made their decision as to whether or not they're going to use a mask or not. Because it's an ordinance, are there some people that will wear it because it's an ordinance? Yes. There are some people that won't speak, because there's a speed limit. I'm one of those people, chief. But there's some people who think the speed limit is a guideline. And that's just how it works, right? And we know medical decisions and health decisions are not purely data-driven. If they were, I wouldn't have had three cookies for breakfast and like four cups of coffee today. I mean, they're just not medically driven. There's other things to consider. You know, what's best for everyone is a consideration. What information is out there is a consideration. Where you look on the internet now, for better or for worse, is a consideration. We also believed as a Health Board that we don't think that the continuation of an ordinance necessarily will get more people to wear masks, or get more people to comply. You know, we think people will make that choice. We hope that there aren't situations where variants crop up and our numbers go back up again. We all hope and pray that for each other, for our community, for everyone. It might happen. When that happens, more people might put the mask on, but this process of Health Board and process of you all being put in this position to decide what's right, it's not a light switch where you just turn off and on. It's a yes, it's a no. It's a yes, it's a no. It's a dial, and where that dial sits right, it's not a science. As much as I wish it were, to make it easy for you, it's not a science. It's an art, just like all your decisions are an art. And so taking all of that information together and seeing everything we've been through from, what, last March to this March, our recommendation as a Health Board unanimously was to you, and the ex-officios do support that, that are on the Health Board, is that you allow the ordinance to expire and take no action tonight. So that means the ordinance would expire on March 1st at 12:01 a.m. The resolution that you passed would still be in place unless and until you direct otherwise on the resolution. People can still continue to, and probably should continue to, wear masks. No one on the Health Board is an anti-masker or an anti-vaxer. We're not anti. We're pro. And we'll continue to educate, and promote, and follow CDC guidelines. We felt that there's a lot of different health concerns, including social health, mental health, community health, that we have to consider when looking at this. So while we do believe in the validity of masking and think it's very important, we also think it's very important that, at this point, no further action be taken on the ordinance. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I will talk a little bit about process when you get to your next agenda item, but I wanted to leave some space for you all to either get more direction, from you, if you want something different, or to answer questions the best I could. I'd like your feedback if I followed your direction from last meeting, because we... I went back and listened to it again and tried to kind of piece out everything that you were asking for, and I hope that we followed through.
Before I open it up to questions, I don't... Is Dr. Milroy with us?
She may be. She did ask for the link. I do not know if she made it on or not, Mayor.
I'm on. I am on.
Hello.
Yes, I'm on.
I just wanted to invite you to share any comments you might have before we move into the discussion period.
Yes, thank you. As far as the Health Board, I think we really want to at first begin by saying thank you to the Yankton City Commission for the leadership that you have shown in this and taking some tough stands, and thanks to the citizens of Yankton who have stepped up to really follow the safety precautions. And I think what that has... I firmly believe that those efforts have led to the improvement in the picture that we're sitting in right now, where our numbers are better, our hospital is not bursting at the seams, and being on the edge of transferring patients out because we have no more capacity in town. So our numbers are better. I think we've given some of our healthcare providers a little breather here, but I would also say that we are in a more favorable position, and I think that that led us to look at letting the resolution expire, because it's been very contentious, and looking at the overall health of the community, but still issuing a very strong statement on the importance of not dropping safety precautions, that it is still vitally important to mask, to do social distancing, avoiding crowds, careful hygiene, and taking the vaccine just as soon as you're eligible. Because I think that there's still enough unknowns that with variants and maybe uncertain vaccine supplies at times, that we just don't have all the answers now. have all the answers now. And so I think that this is something we need to monitor and exactly what Amy Leon just said about kind of a dial, dial forward, dial back. But at this point, I think with the numbers looking good, that it's okay to just strongly endorse continuing the resolution and letting the ordinance just expire. But with the thought that the health board does plan to meet weekly, we sort of want to take the COVID pulse of the community and follow the metrics and understanding that metrics maybe are not perfect, because this is a new imperfect science right now. We're kind of blazing new territory as we go. No one's ever really dealt with this exact situation before. And in checking a number of resources, the World Health Organization, CDC, there actually aren't any magic numbers to say, okay, hey, we're okay. I think every organization that I was able to research on this said, don't drop your precautions too early. So I think it's important that we continue to keep our guard up. And the health board does plan to continue to meet weekly. I thank the staff and Amy for putting the metrics together. I think that does give us a good, they may be imperfect, but gives us kind of a good sense of where the situation is in the community as far as hospital situation and capacity, how many numbers we're seeing, and really how our vaccination rates are going. So I think those were the thoughts that helped us kind of come to our decision to recommend letting the ordinance expire and just strongly endorsing the resolution. So.
Thank you, Dr. Milroy. Commission discussion. Any questions?
No, but I did want to point out, I know a graph that City Manager Leon just sent out today, I think is also a great representation of that dial up and dial down, and kind of is indicative of what we've seen in our community. It's a very, I'm an elementary education teacher by trade, so all the pretty colored lines on there works really nice. But I was trying to use my pen to go back and scroll across. I mean, we're seeing cases at the level we did back in August. You know, so when we look at that fact and we dialed up, I do think at this point, as City Manager Leon has pointed out, it's a good time to dial down. I do have, and I wanted to point out that chart, so thank you to you and the city staff for putting that together. And would have been a good one maybe to even include in your metrics as you're seeing that, because it's a good visual of what we've seen in our community over the time versus where we're just at. But I do like that chart. My question for Ross in a clarification, because I do believe I'm right on this, so you can clarify that for me, is since we've had the first reading, if we do allow this to expire tonight, is it when we reference a dial up with the first reading already done at our last meeting, is this kind of like what we did when we looked at businesses back when this first started, in that we did a reading, and should something change quickly? We don't have to do two readings to reenact it, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. And I'm of the opinion, particularly since there isn't an enforcement mechanism contained within it, if all we're doing is changing the sunset date, I think we could do that with a single second reading. So yeah, you can pull this one out, blow the dust off of it, and push it through in a single meeting if you needed to.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, because in part of this, as Dr. Milroy has said too, and keeping a close eye on things, I think it's good to know what our options are.
This is Commissioner Minor. I'm sitting in a stairwell at the Yankton Middle School right now, in case you're curious where I am. I would just like to thank the health board for reaching out and gathering these various numbers. Of course, it is an inexact science, and things are changing all the time. We didn't have a vaccine metric when we were making these decisions back in November. There was no such thing. So pretty impressive to be nearing the end of February and have, was it 11% of our population already with two doses, you know? I am comfortable, I appreciate Commissioner Moser's question just now. If we needed to move quickly, we could. And if the health board is continuing to meet and look at these metrics on a weekly basis, I think we've positioned ourselves as best we can for what could be a very uncertain couple of months, right? The vaccines are suddenly rolling out, I think faster than people anticipated, which is great. Who knows what's going to happen with the variants. But I appreciate the hard work, the hard conversations that the health board has been having. And I appreciate that you'll continue to have those and inform the commission on how to move that dial. So thank you.
Last call for questions or discussion. If not, then we will move on to number four under Old Business, and that is Consideration Memorandum 21-38 regarding Ordinance Number 1046, which is a temporary mask ordinance. This is the second reading and public hearing of said ordinance.
And Mayor, just a point of clarification, I did get a question. You know, I think it's important that we do conduct the public hearing, and you can do that. I think you should do that. However, if there is no motion on the table, or there's no second of a motion that's made, my understanding is it dies from a lack of a motion. So then there wouldn't be no vote being taken. Or you can make a motion in a second and take a vote, if you'd like to do that as well, but that is not necessary. So I did want to clarify that. I think we just have, you know, one audience member that signed up, maybe Chief will have a couple more, but it doesn't look like it will be a long public hearing. So you can move forward as you'd like to proceed, unless there's somebody on your council or on your commission that would like to make, you know, a motion.
And just to be clear for anyone watching us tonight, if there's no motion taken, then what essentially happens is the health board recommendation is carried out, the ordinance expires on March 1st, and then the resolution that we passed last April would still be in effect, which recommends wearing a mask, hand hygiene, all those things that we've all heard a million times that we still need to do.
Correct.
So with that, is there, does anyone, does anyone on the commission want to make a motion or have any discussion of this? Okay, hearing nothing, we will open it up to public input. We do have a member of the audience who would like to address the commission, unless you've changed your mind, Kurt?
Nope, that's great.
Yep, Kurt, come on up.
Thanks for taking a little public input on it. I suspect we'll be talking about this subject off and on for the balance of the year. So I thought, well, I spoke in December a little bit, I spoke two weeks ago. But in the last couple of days, I made myself some notes, and the first thing I want to do is make sure I thank the health board. As opposed to two weeks ago, where we were kind of moving down the road towards an extension of this, perhaps even past the end of May, we weren't sure. Maybe it'll pop back up in the future. But in any case, since the last two weeks, what's happened is a lot of data got studied, a lot more information got looked at. Our trends were low in August and jumped up through about the middle to late October, and then they've been going down since. But in any case, beyond the mask, I worry about this larger, what I call epidemic of fear that we have in this country and the world. And I thought maybe we should talk about that a little bit. I think from some points of view, the lockdowns, the mandatory masks, the enforcement and the restrictions of freedom and liberty has made it kind of a sad year for the last year. At the last commission meeting, it seemed certain that we would rubber stamp an extension, thank you to the health board and to whoever else was involved, that we looked at the data and decided that maybe we don't have to continue down that way. As they say, there's nothing more permanent than a temporary law. In this case, maybe that's not true. But anyhow, thanks for the rational thinking and the study of the data. But let's take a minute and do kind of a celebration, but maybe a learning moment. I think about the hesitation that we all had when the schools were about ready to open in August. You know, the rest of the world out there, a lot of states, a lot of big cities, heck, they're still worried about that. But our state and this city, this school board carefully studied it, planned it, implemented it, and we went on. Did they have fear? Yeah, we had a lot of fear right then. Did they think there'd be a big surge? Yeah, they thought there might be. But they went ahead and they were brave and they stepped up to it. And I think what they looked at is the, in addition to the virus, there's a lot of downside of acting the way we are in the school system in the larger cities in this country. And they looked at that downside versus the risk, and they waited out. And they went to, they went to a planning and implementation thinking rather than, oh my gosh, I'm worried, I gotta stop thinking. So maybe just kind of thinking of that school board moment back there in August, or state moment, maybe that will help us with the next decision, because all this stuff has wider implication than just masks on, masks off. It ricochets a lot of different ways. And then you think about the other thing that we've learned this last year, you know, every time you turn the page or open the TV, you know, there's a new thing that's going to get us. You know, we're going to worry about whether the Rushmore 4th of July thing was going to create a huge surge, or Sturgis, or Thanksgiving, or don't get together with your family over Christmas, or the latest one was Super Bowl spreaders. And they get repeated so often that you think it's true, but it never really happened. So all I'm advocating for is when you go into the future, just take a look at all the aspects of the issues. Try not to be swayed by the fear that infects so many people and is so media-driven out there. You know, we saw some pretty bad things happen in some big cities, Minneapolis, Seattle, Chicago, LA, New York, you know, pretty big disasters this year. And it really comes down to, it's tough to speak up and be strong when there's epidemic of fear things going on. Anyhow, my point today is just thanks to the board for thinking through the data and thinking about how to get at this. Enough said.
Thank you, Kurt. And I don't, I don't know if we mentioned your last name, it's Kurt Bernard for the viewing audience, longtime citizen of Yankton. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the commission this evening? Then Dave, I will go to you. Any YouTube comments?
There are no YouTube comments.
All right. So last chance, any commission discussion before we proceed? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Then we are moving on to number five under Old Business, and that is Consideration Memorandum 21-39 regarding Ordinance Number 1047. And this is a public hearing regarding the removal of restrictions on the sale of alcohol on Christmas Day in the city of Yankton. What is your pleasure?
Benson.
Sarda seconds.
You'll have to pick one, Al.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube?
No comments on YouTube.
All right, Al, roll call, please.
If I'm to pick one, I would pick Jack Daniels. This is roll call on Old Business Item 3-5. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old Business Item 3-5 passes 9-0.
Moving on to new business. Number one is Consideration Memorandum 21-32 and Resolution 21-13 regarding a Clean Water State Revolving Fund loan for the wastewater plant project. What is your pleasure?
So moved, Moser.
Weber, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Amy or Kyle, do you want to update us and the public on why we're addressing this again? Because it seems like we just discussed this.
We did. I sure will, unless Kyle is on, but I can't see who's all here. So if Kyle is available, I will let him take that.
I am, Commissioner.
Oh, there he is.
I am here. Honorable Mayor, commissions. What we're running into with the COVID, we're seeing a, some increase in bids coming in right now. So we're getting some concern from our grant provider, the EDA. They're kind of encouraging us to go out and get some additional funds to cover those overages. The way the grant program works is anything that we have in the preliminary engineering report that we put together, oh, approximately a year and a half ago, we have to complete those projects per what's in the engineering report. So managing those construction costs are a little bit difficult when we can't pull portions of the project out. So we may have some overages that we're going to have to cover. So we opted to amend our SRF application that we put in, that we did last meeting for an additional $1 million to hopefully cover those overages if needed. If we don't use the money, there's no fees or anything, or penalized portions of that if we don't use it. So basically, we're just doing additional amount, beginning at the 2% for 20 years, just to cover those overages that we're seeing in the bids that are coming in. And we've heard as high as 25% on some of the projects EDA has had bid out. So on the $8 million project, that's roughly $2 million. So hopefully we don't come in that high. We do have some play with the design, but again, we have to meet those preliminary engineering reports and what was in those applications. So not a lot of room for, to manage those costs during construction and during design. So that's kind of where we're at.
And I'd just like to remind the commission that this increase in SRF funding would not impact our rates. We've talked with D and R about that. Also, if we don't need those funds, we're not penalized for that. But we're just trying to cover our bases here, and we're predicting that we're going to have a lot of inflation with this project. So I wanted to make sure everyone understood that, because last week, you know, last time when you, we applied for this, you, we indicated that we didn't need to raise rates at this amount. And again, with this additional $1 million, you wouldn't either. So really, for this memorandum, we're kind of, we're getting your verbal permission to move forward, and then we will hold the full reading and public hearing, so it'll be an opportunity for public comment on this on the 8th with your second action, if you should agree.
Thank you for that update. Any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Dave, any comments on YouTube?
No comments on YouTube.
Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on new business item 4-1. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old Business Item 4-1 passes 9-0.
Number two under new business is establishing March 8th, 2021, is the date for a public hearing on the state revolving fund application for the wastewater plant project. Does someone want to introduce that?
Introduced, Moser.
Thank you. Do we need to discuss that at all before we move on? Okay. I'm seeing no's in the room. Number three under new business is Consideration Memorandum 21-28 regarding Resolution 21-09, which is the transfer of 34 acres of city of Yankton-owned land in Nebraska to the National Park Service. What is your pleasure?
Brunick, so moved.
Sarda, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Maybe, Amy, you could start off with describing for the public what's being proposed here.
I will, and I know that Todd and Dave Mingo are I will. And I know that Todd and, and Dave Mingo are here as well. Some of you that have been on the commission for a while might remember, this could have been even two years ago perhaps. But the National Park Service alerted us to an opportunity that they have to make some park improvements. But in order to access those grant funds, they have to actually own the land. And so they're looking at doing some improvements across the bridge on that land that is currently owned by the city. So in reality, while, while it is city park right now, we've always treated it sort of jointly and worked together on things. But in order for them to have access to the grant funds and to do those improvements, which I'll let Todd talk about the specific improvements, they need to own the land. So this is a land transfer. It does have what we're not calling a clawback, but acts like a clawback if they're unsuccessful in the grant application or aren't able to complete the projects. We would retain ownership of the land, but this would allow them to have the land in name so that they can follow through on the federal grant program. Todd, would you like to inform the commission about the specific improvements?
Yes. So they've talked, we've talked about, right now we would consider it primitive trail and access is really gained by walking down the old Highway 81 roadbed to the gravel road. That's an access to the two wells that are on that property. The National Park Service would like to see an ADA accessible ramp somewhere in the ditch. And they prefer it to be closer to the bridge access, either the top level or the lower level. So that may actually have to happen on land that we own. Again, going back in time, some of our other efforts, the Nebraska Department of Roads no longer allows trails in the right of way. And highway, the old Highway 81 spur that leads you to the parking area on the Nebraska side is under Cedar County's management and it would be considered state right of way. So they would like to do an ADA ramp. The trails down below right now are really just mud, leaves, branches, primitive. They'd like to see a harder surface on that, not necessarily saying asphalt or concrete, but a harder surface that could pack down. Again, that, that makes it a little more ADA friendly. Talked about vault toilets, again, having access from there. Again, at one time we did have porta pott that sat over there, but we had trouble with vandalism, getting it tipped over and such. So we had to remove that. So they'd like to see a vault toilet. And again, all the other things that come with National Park Service benches and trash cans and educational signage to, to talk about the area. They've used the Conservation Corps, put them in touch with us that have done some tree trimming down there. But those types of improvements to, again, make it a nice trail system because it does lead to a trail that goes underneath the new bridge, which leads to their land where they have trail and educational signage. And again, they're looking at trying to figure out how to get access to Green Island for people, which is the island just to the west of the new bridge, the Discovery Bridge. So they, they have a desire to see everything improve down there and get people over there and using the trails because they want them on their property and again, utilizing the educational signage and the property that they currently have. And this would help them in that effort.
I, in full disclosure, asked Dave Mingo a question that I think Dave would be helpful, helpful for the rest of the commission to hear just because it was a question that I had. And that quick question was, is the land we're looking at turning over to the National Park Service able to be developed?
Sorry, it took a second to load up. Substantially, the northern portion of what we own, these 34 acres anyway, we own 40 total. There is about a six acre portion that's south of the, the Cedar County access to the bridge that were, is not a part of this discussion. The 34 acres that we own that's part of this discussion, some of that would be kept by the city for the wells that we have in existence. A large portion of it is already in a conservation easement. So it would not be available for development in any way, shape or form. And that's part of the Missouri National Recreation River. And then the remainder of it, a majority of it's in floodplain. So it'd be very difficult for any type of develop to occur there. Nothing is, ever could be called impossible, but it, it would not be practical to consider development on these 34 acres.
Thank you.
Just so the commission knows, this is an item that, because it's a transfer of land, requires that super, super majority vote.
So this seems like a win-win-win for me because it, the responsibility for maintenance goes, goes away for the city. The tax obligation for property tax to Nebraska goes away and the people of Yankton still get to use it. So I don't see the, the negative side of this arrangement. And we have the clawback clause. So if it did, didn't formulate the way it's supposed to, then we could still retain the property. So I don't see a negative with it.
I think the potential to have a full-fledged bathroom over there is tremendous and having the ADA accessibility is great. And I also think long-term, as we have more in-depth, in-depth discussions about the future of the Meridian Bridge and the repairs that are going to be made there, it might make the National Park Service more of an ally in seeking help to solve that huge challenge we have ahead of us. It's kind of my ulterior thinking. Amy, do you think that's a possibility?
Everything's possible.
All right. Any more commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Dave, any comments on YouTube?
There are no YouTube comments on this issue.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-3. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mojer?
Mojer, aye.
Mojer is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Old business item, or I'm sorry, new business item 4-3 passes 9-0.
Number four under new business is establishing March 22nd as the date for a public hearing on to consider resolution 21-10, an alley right-of-way vacation request for the north-south alley between 8th and 9th Streets and also between Dakota and Redmond Streets. And the Yankton Medical Clinic is the applicant and adjacent property owner. What is your pleasure?
Benson, so moved.
Brunick, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Dave, do you want to describe for the public what's being considered here? And the planning commission recommendation?
Sure. This is, as, as stated in the agenda item, first reading and establishing March 22nd as the date for public hearing. Right-of-way vacations have a longer publication period. There's multiple requirements for, for having notices made available to the public. As an adjacent property owner, the Yankton Medical Clinic has the right to request the vacation of the right-of-way. Criteria for consideration of that include not having any utilities in the right-of-way or any utilities planned to be in the right-of-way. We went through the process of contacting all the utility companies, received comments back from them that there was no future need. Planning commission's consideration, which I'll also mention at the public hearing in a month, included discussions of any potential need for through traffic or utility corridors, north or south. There are no other alleys in the neighborhood. In fact, there aren't really any alleys within eight blocks of there that would be possible connectors. The planning commission went through their process and recommended approval of the vacation of the right-of-way. And again, that's what you'll hear on March 22nd after two more public publications.
Thank you, Dave. Any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission? Dave, once again, any comments on YouTube?
No YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-4. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mojer?
Mojer, aye.
Mojer is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-4 passes 9-0.
Number five under new business is consideration memorandum 21-30 regarding resolution 21-11, a plat of the both, of both sides of the 300 block of Lilac Lane and the east side of the 300 block of Tulip Lane. Matt, Matthew Christensen, the managing member of White Crane Estates LLC is the owner. What is your pleasure?
Shram, so moved.
Second, Mojer.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? We are out of audience members here, so I'll go to Dave. Any YouTube comments?
No comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-5. Mojer?
Mojer, aye.
Mojer is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-5 passes 9-0.
Wasn't that 4-4?
No, this is 4-5, I believe, right? 4-4 was setting the date for the public hearing for the request to vacate the right-of-way.
Yep. Sorry.
My mistake. I was reading it wrong. I was reading as it was on top versus the bottom of the agenda.
All right. So now we are on number six under new business, which is consideration memorandum 21-31 regarding resolution 21-12, a plat of the west side of the 300 block of Hollyhock Lane. Again, White Crane Estates LLC is the owner. What is your pleasure?
Shram, so moved.
Brunick, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Again, there's no one in the audience, so we'll go to Dave. YouTube comments?
There are no YouTube comments.
Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-6. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybomb?
Mybomb is aye.
Mybomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mojer?
Mojer, aye.
Mojer is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-6 passes 9-0.
Number seven under new business is consideration memorandum 21-33 regarding the community development block grant proposal for the pathway shelter for the homeless capacity building improvement project. And I'm going to turn it over to Eric Ambrosian from Planning and Development District 3 to walk us through this process.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I'm Eric Ambrosian with District 3 Planning here in Yankton and here to kind of walk you through the, the public hearing process for a community development block grant application that the city would send in to the Governor's Office of Economic Development for the benefit of Pathway Shelter here in town to make some improvements to their organization or their, their property and, and to acquire a piece of ground across the street from their current facility and then making some improvements to the, to the buildings there. The whole idea, the purpose of this project is to basically show, you know, show the response to, to COVID in, in the community. And, you know, by expanding the operation and expanding the facilities, that's, that's showing, showing a response or increasing its capacity to, to serve, serve the community. So I know there's probably a couple of commissioners that have not been through this block grant process before, but basically the, the block grant program is, is funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development that are allocated to the state of South Dakota. The Governor's Office of Economic Development then awards their allocation every year to various public projects. And, you know, you usually see, you know, infrastructure projects, public facilities like libraries, community centers and so forth as, as projects that receive funding. And the funds go to local units of government. The local units of government can use the funds themselves for their projects, you know, like infrastructure. Or they can pass the funds through to a local nonprofit organization for an eligible purpose or eligible use of funds. And so that's really what we're looking at here tonight is a project where funds, if awarded, would flow through the city of Yankton to Pathway Shelter to complete their project. There's basically two, two main components to the, to the project. And the, the first one is, is land acquisition. And I think in your packet, I think there was a map showing the piece of property right across the street to the east of the existing pathway shelter. And so that's the property under, under consideration for acquisition. So then the other activity is the improvements to the structures on that property. So the, the thing that we can do with the block grant funds is, is acquire property and, and make improvements to, to the, to the structure. So that's what we're basically applying for. The, the difference this year on this application is that the state received a special COVID relief fund allocation of block grant funds. So these are actually going to be 100% grants, which is not, it's not very common to, to get a, a fully funded project with block grant funds. So it's a good opportunity. And so the main, again, the main strings attached to the, the applications that we, we need to show, you know, the response or how, how this project, you know, shows response to, to the COVID pandemic in Yankton. So we're gonna, we're gonna try, try our best to put a competitive application in. And if, if it's successful, we should know, we should know whether it's funded before Memorial Day. The, I guess, so the items in the, in the packet there under, under memorandum 21-33 are the, the items that you'll be considering tonight as a, as a commission. The, the program requires that, you know, the, the commission pass an authorizing resolution, you know, that basically gives us the authority to submit the application materials. Then we also have a resolution that would appoint the city manager as the, the certifying officer for the project and the environmental certifying officer. So basically then she's allowed to sign all project documents, you know, outside of the, the commission environment. So we can, we can move the, move the paperwork along and so forth. I think, I guess there was one, there's another one too. It's a, it's a resolution that makes up a list of, of initial requirements for the, for the application. But the two authorizing resolutions are the, are the big ones to, to consider tonight. I'll, in the interest of keeping things moving along, I will, I will step back. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a comment?
You may, Dave. Go ahead.
So just point of clarification, Eric is a pretty modest and humble guy. So he, he's working on these programs with
So just point of clarification, Eric is a pretty modest and humble guy, so he's working on these programs with communities from many, many counties and many, many cities. So he kind of takes the details in stride. But one thing, just for the commissioners that haven't been through the community development block grant program before, for clarification for them, is by the time we get to this point in the process, it's already been vetted at the staff and even the state level to make sure that we found a project that really fits a specific targeted area that the Governor's Office of Economic Development is willing to fund. This isn't money that the city of Yankton could receive and then just spend on something else. It took us about a month and a half to get to this point to target a project that this pot of money would be good for. And this is the one that kind of checked all the boxes. So for those of you not familiar with CDBG, that's how we got here.
Thank you for that further explanation, Dave. I just think this is a tremendous opportunity to strengthen a real resource in our community. We just read over the weekend how they helped people stay safe in the cold. So I will open it up to commission discussion. All right, if there is, for a point of clarification, there are multiple resolutions, but we can approve them all with the memorandum with one vote? Is that correct? I'm seeing a nod of yes in the room. We still have no one in the audience, so I'll go to Dave for any YouTube comments.
There are no YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
I believe we're waiting for a motion and a second.
So moved, Moser.
My bomb, I'd make a motion to approve resolutions 21-14, 21-15, and 21-16.
Sorry, I got carried away there. We now have a motion and a second. Last call, any discussion on this item? All right, Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-7, which does include all three resolutions. Weber?
Weber votes aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. My bomb?
My bomb is aye.
My bomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-7 passes 9-0.
Thanks, everybody.
Eric, thank you again for your work and good luck.
All right, thank you.
Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-35 regarding resolution 21-18. This would be for the purchase of a 2021 four-by-two yard tractor for the Public Works Department at a cost of $107,167. What is your pleasure?
Benson, so moved.
Weber seconds.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Still no one in the audience, so Dave, any YouTube comments?
There are no YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on new business item 4-8. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. My bomb?
My bomb is aye.
My bomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-8 passes 9-0.
Number nine under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-34 regarding resolution 21-17 for the purchase of a new steel transfer station, walking floor trailer for the Public Works Department. And this would be at a cost of $70,617. What is your pleasure?
Brunick, so moved.
Second, Moser.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? There is no one in the audience, so I will go to Dave on YouTube.
There are no YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-9. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. My bomb?
My bomb is aye.
My bomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-9 passes 9-0.
Number 10 under new business is consideration memorandum 21-36 regarding acceptance of the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and street improvements for Phase 2A-2 of the Westbrook Estates residential development project. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves.
Sarda, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? There's still no one in the audience. Dave, any YouTube comments?
No comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-10. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. My bomb?
My bomb is aye.
My bomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-10 passes 9-0.
And number 11 under new business is consideration of memorandum 21-37 regarding the agreement between Third Millennium Associates and the city of Yankton. What is your pleasure?
Minor moves memorandum.
Brunick, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? There is no one in the audience, so I will go to Dave. Any YouTube comments?
No YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-11. My bomb?
My bomb is aye.
My bomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item 4-11 passes 9-0.
There is no other business on tonight's agenda, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Shram, so moved.
Moser, second.
We got a motion and a second. Al, roll call, please.
Excuse me, and this is roll call on the adjournment of the regularly scheduled meeting of City Commission of February 22nd. Minor?
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. My bomb?
My bomb is aye.
My bomb is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Adjournment of the meeting passes 9-0.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Take care.